Okay, calling the Brandon Board of Education meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark here.
Rebecca Haynes here.
Lisa Cabaluna, absent with notice.
It's the Colaga here.
Hillary Stokowski here.
Jeff Silky.
Here.
Dan Sultan.
Here. Dan for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and before we start with our student report, just a couple of housekeeping. We are adding an additional item to our agenda. It'll be action item K like King. And that'll be the approval of the Dan Burke contract addendum. And then a slight revision to action item number A. And that's the approval of the Brandon High School freshman STEM classes overnight trip. And I'm not sure what the revision differences is.
Two locations. We're acting on two locations.
Gotcha.
Because the original
Oh, yeah.
potential is going to be changed because there was a mix up. Because of COVID, thought they were scheduled for a facility. Now they're not sure if they're going to have availability or they're gonna have to move to a different venue.
Gotcha.
So we're acting basically the same item. Just we're acting on two locations so that we don't know which one it is yet.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have our Brandon school, high school student report.
They are not on. They received Zoom link and there's no one. They are not on with us.
Okay, next on our agenda, we got the bond update with Brian, Jeff, and Jan here. Who wants to take the floor?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Can you hear you, Brian? Can you hear you, Brian?
Hi. Beautiful day out here. Sorry I couldn't be with you. I'm ready for spring, so. Yes, we have our update for you for the month of March. We have some other things to talk about with a couple of award recommendations tonight, so. I've got Maria helping me today to advance the slides. Thank you, Maria. So the first slide coming up here is just a quick design update. We will have two projects that will be under construction this summer that we're working on some design specifications for. We mentioned to you, I think, a previous meeting. We're gonna be doing some track repairs at the high school and also some turf repairs to the field. Basically, we're going to be doing the full construction not until the summer of 23. So these are some repairs that need to be made to get us through the summer of 22 athletic season. And then to buy us basically one more year of playability on those, on the field and also on the track. So we're in the design stage right now with Mike from Forsight Design. And we'll be getting some quotes and bringing those to you very soon. As far as summer 23 construction, we've got some design meetings that have begun. And just a quick update for you. The projects that will be, will be coming to you soon with more information. But for summer 23 is the remodeling of the interior at Harvey Swanson. I've already had, excuse me, a meeting with Debbie and we're going to, she's got her committees formed and we'll be starting meeting, I think, the second week or so in April. And we're going to start meeting on the various pieces of the interior renovations at Swanson. Also, we'll be doing some design, starting some design meetings on the interior renovations at the high school. We mentioned to you just a few seconds ago about the high school track and turf field replacement. That'll be going out for bids for the summer construction of 23. We're also looking at doing, starting design on the parking lots for the Harvey Swanson and also the high school. Putting those in the summer 23 construction. And our civil engineers have already met with Mark and walked the sites. They'll be sending me now a site plan showing where they need soil borings taken. So we can get those done for them and start to do more investigation for the parking lots. So we can get those designed for summer 23 construction. And also, we started meeting with the athletic facility group and talking about all the exterior athletic projects that are in the bond. So we have our next meeting coming up on April 6th. We had one meeting so far, just as an overall discussion on each of the, each of the projects. And we'll be getting into much more detail at our April 6th meeting. As far as the, the items that the committee feels need to be looked at. And we can start putting some numbers to those and see how they compare to the, the bond form. And just start to refine that scope of work for those projects. So those are the, those are the design, design, the projects that are in design coming up, just to identify those for the board. Is there any, any questions you may have on any of those that I could answer? As I said, we just started these meetings. As we go further, we'll be actually presenting some items to you that have, that have been discussed. But for now, I just wanted to let the board know that we've started design on these, on these projects.
Anybody got any questions? No, sounds good, Brian. Sounds good, Brian.
Okay, so there's two projects we're bringing to you today. Jeff and I will be bringing to you tonight. I think the information is in your packet. There's two award recommendations that we would like to get voted on tonight. The first is the Harvey Swanson Playground. We presented that at our last meeting last month. There was some 3D pictures and color renderings of the, of the playscapes in the three different areas of Harvey Swanson. Those bids came in, we had two bidders that came, that presented proposals. The low contractor was Sinclair Recreation. They bid the exact pieces of equipment that were in the specifications that the committee had looked at and decided on. So we were happy that they were the low bidder. They're prepared to start that process if they're awarded the bids. And they're looking at doing the construction in the month of July and early August. And being ready, totally ready for school to start with the new equipment. Is there any questions on that recommendation?
No, sounds great. It's getting finally redone.
Yep, I'm very happy because it's the exact pieces that the committee had selected and that we had our several meetings on, so. They're going to get exactly, and we presented those to the board, so you'll be getting exactly what we presented to the board. So we're very happy with that, very excited. It's gonna be a great improvement.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, the next project for discussion, and I'm gonna give a little bit of history here. And then I'll turn it over to Jeff to talk in more detail about the actual bids received. But it's the Oakwood Elementary Parking Lot. And what I did is on the next slide, I made some notes here. I took an aerial photograph of the site. And I just want to explain a little bit about what we're, we're actually, what was actually in the design drawings. And then, like I said, I'll turn it over to Jeff in a minute or two, so he can explain all the numbers that came in. So the, the base bid is what I've got shown on the photograph. It's, it's a reconstruction. The, the roadways that are in the yellow, I kinda highlighted them in yellow there. There's the bus loop down in the bottom right corner. And then the road kind of wise off to the top of the page where there's the drive lanes and then the loop that's right in front of the, the school. So the items that are in yellow are designed for a full replacement. Full removal of the asphalt in the base and then a new, a new base brought in. And then new asphalt put down. So the items in yellow are full replacement of what's there. That gets the most abuse, those roadways. We had some soil borings that we took several months ago. And they really showed that there was not a lot of base underneath the asphalt, not as much as we like to see. Right, in the meeting last week, I was trying to describe asphalt works differently than concrete. A lot of, a lot of the city streets and such are concrete, which is all of one thickness of material. Asphalt is different. It's, I kinda, I did a similar, tried to do a little demonstration there. It's like the skin on your, on your arm. The, the upper part of your skin is the asphalt that you see and you walk on, and it's, it's a couple inches thick. And what's really important for the longevity of roadways and parking lots that are made of asphalt is the base underneath it. So if, if the, if the skin is like, if the asphalt is like the skin on your arm, the base underneath is like your muscle. So the stronger you are underneath your skin, the, the longer your roadway is going to last. And what we found with the soil borings that were taken is they were only like four inches, three inches in some area. And it's really not what we like to see. So it's probably a, a good reason of why the, the condition of the road is, is like it is. It's showing a lot of distress. And we just don't feel from what we saw in the soil borings that there was enough base put underneath there years ago when it was, when it was built. So that's why on the diagram you see there, the roadways that are highlighted in yellow, which get the most traffic from buses and cars, will be a full depth replacement. It'll be five inches of asphalt on 10 inches of, of base. So it'll be a very heavy duty section that will withstand the traffic and the tire movement for, from cars and buses and garbage trucks and delivery trucks. So that's, that's in the base bid there in the yellow. The area on the left-hand side, which is from the roadway coming in to where the road kinda wise off there, where, where the, Maria, thank you for moving your cursor there. That's on the, on the actual bid. That's called for the removal of the, of the asphalt only with the base to remain. It seemed to be a little bit better condition. So in the base bid, we were trying to go for, you know, economics here because we were very concerned about the budget at this time with the COVID situation. The numbers have been kinda crazy out there in the world, so we were, we, with the base bid, we did as a, as kinda like step number one. So the area on the left would be just removal of, of the asphalt on the existing base. And the two parking lots off to the right-hand side in the upper part there. That's called for a mill and cap of that asphalt on the existing, which basically means they would come in and shave off about the top two inches of the asphalt and put down two new inches of asphalt on that existing base as well. So that was the base bid number, and Jeff will explain that in a second. But we took two alternate bids because of our concern of the base area not being thick enough. And on the bottom of the page, I tried to do a little explanation. There's called alternate number one and alternate number two. So on the left-hand side is alternate number one. And what this applies to the areas that's not in yellow. So this is the driveway coming in and the two parking lots. That's what alternate number one and number two apply to. Because again, as I said, the area that's in yellow, that's getting full replacement. So alternate number one in the two areas is to put new asphalt down, scrape out the old base, dig down, and pulverize the existing asphalt that's there and use that as some of the new base. So in the diagram on the lower left, you can see there's a thin layer of top, which is the new asphalt. And then the base layer is divided into two pieces. The bottom piece that says pulverized asphalt. And then the, the middle piece there, it looks like an Oreo cookie, would be the new 21AA base. So that was alternate number one, and what it does is it utilizes that existing asphalt that's there. They scrape it off, they pulverize it, they place it down first on the bottom. And then what it means is they don't have to bring in so much new base for those areas. Because looking at alternate number two, they're bringing in all new base. So you see the new asphalt on top. And then the base down below would be all new 21AA that they have to import into the site and place down. So at the end of the day, alternate number two, everything would be colored yellow on that diagram. That's what alternate number two means, that everything would be full depth replacement of base and asphalt. So I hope I didn't confuse anybody, but so we wanted to put these alternates in because we weren't sure of what, how the bidding market was going to be. It's just been kinda unpredictable in the last two years here. So if there's no questions on that, I hope I didn't confuse people. But if there's any questions, I'll try to answer it. And other than that, I'll turn it over to Jeff and he can talk about the numbers.
I'm good with Jeff going. Question for Brian right now?
Well, I guess I have one question. So if, if with the route where, where we're reusing the current asphalt, pulverizing it, pulverizing it, does that give it? Fast bond, so we fast, so we, as we are, as we are roads right now?
I guess the way I can answer that is, you know, sometimes if you go to the store and you've got three cleaners and one says good, one says better, and one says best. That's kinda what we have here. The base bid is a good one. The alternate number one is a better one. But alternate number two is gonna give you the best.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Jeff. You got it.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. As Brian has indicated, we did have three different options here with the base bid and alternate one and alternate two. We put together the bidding with just two bid divisions. So it's the, just one bid division for site work and the second bid division was for paving. And we've got, we ended up with really good results. We weren't sure how many bidders we were gonna get. We were pretty confident we were gonna get a fair number of asphalt bidders, but was not certain about site work. But as you can tell from the bid tab that was included in your board pack, we had six site contractors to bid and 10 paving contractors to bid, which are really good numbers in this day and age with bidding at this time of year of bidding. So we were pleased with that. We also got decent numbers as far as the, the dollar amounts for the scopes. And they came in pretty, pretty good compared to the bond budget. The bond budget overall was 877,500. The, the only thing that was a little different was that between the three different options, the paving contractor was consistent and low on all three of the options. But then there was a different site work contractor for each one of the options from base bid to alternate one to alternate two. So we interviewed all of those site contractors in the low paving bidder. Found out that they had complete bids, pretty confident in their abilities. And we would have been happy with any of them depending on which option was selected. We had some meetings with the district and reviewed the various options and the costs. And it was kind of a consensus from our standpoint that the, the best decision for the long-term, you know, use and, and stretching out the life for the paving and the parking lot as long as possible would be to go to alternate two. The total cost on that one, the site work and paving, is 888,257. So that's a little bit more, about seven, about 11,000 more than the bond budget. But we also have a contingency in there of 10% of the bond budget. So we still have roughly 70,000 in contingency for some unforeseen conditions. And there's a chance with site work, probably is the, the one area of work that presents the, a little bigger chance for unforeseen conditions until after we start to work and be able to get the shovel in the ground and take a look at things. We've got some information based on the soil borings. But we felt overall that it was the, the best decision for the district to go with alternate two.
And if I understand this, because I know too, if there's Oakwood people here or listening, this has been, and I saw, I mean, just been awful there. But I also explained that the route that we have currently, we don't have much options to change that because we have, it's surrounded in areas by wetlands, correct?
Yes, I'm not the, the civil engineer, but I've been on quite a few sites before. And it's pretty obvious that there's a, a fair amount of, you know, wetlands around the area. It's, it's pretty low site overall. But I think this would give the district the best chance for getting a little longer use out of the parking lot.
Sounds good. Anybody got questions, concerns? Alternate two is the recommendation, and it's supposed to be our best for this driveway and everything will be redone. And we think that will be done, you say, before September 2022?
Yeah, yes, it should be. We've scheduled to have it done mid-August, actually.
I'm good. Anybody got question? Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Brian, for your time. Appreciate it. We'll be hearing on the other projects that are next.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next I got our, our other bond project. Bond project. Or I'm getting feedback.
Yeah. Good evening. There are a handful of projects that our, our construction manager are not involved with. Two of those we're presenting to you tonight to get approval. Thomas and myself, along with Jeremy Moats, our district's contract attorney, developed an RFP, I call it RP, he calls them RFP, the quest for bids for our new district-wide phone slash emergency communication system. And we also worked on the RFP for security cameras, additional external cameras, as well as replacing and adding some of the internal cameras. As you're aware, the cameras were placed about four years ago, so there's some better technology on the internal. We, Thomas and Dan have gone through and found some areas for improvements there. Regarding the phone system, we had seven vendors bid. And Thomas, Dan Stevens, Mike Hooker, Diane Sedan, and myself interviewed three of those seven vendors. And then after those interviews, we headed down to two. We did some follow-up questions with the two remaining vendors. And it was decided that, through Thomas' did a lot of analysis, and it was decided that evolving technologies is the vendor that we have chosen to award this bid to.
Okay, good.
That's the phone system. Security cameras, we had five vendors bid on these security cameras. ROK came in about $31,000 less than the nearest vendor. Reviewing everything to make sure everything was in order. We didn't, it was, so we did not feel a need to do any follow-up interviews because they, they were so much lower. And we currently use ROK systems. They installed the first set. So made sense for all those reasons to recommend ROK security systems for the, for the cameras.
Okay, great. Lots of work done this month. I think lots of business.
That's okay.
Exactly.
I have a question about the cameras.
Yes.
Um, so you said they'll be replacing internal and external cameras?
Adding external, adding external and replacing some of the internal.
Okay, so where are we?
Adding some, adding some internal.
Yeah, okay. Where are we adding external cameras?
We've been, wait. We've been asked not to comment.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
Any other questions that?
No. Sensitive security.
And this is district-wide, all four buildings. Like this is, this is, okay.
This is the whole district, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Jan. Any other questions, concerns? And again, all this is, all this is only the project talked about. Money coming out. Okay, next. That just be it, that just be it.
I think it's Brian. I think it's Brian.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I, I wanted to know, I think, I think Jan asked me to comment on the, the door barricade project that we have up in Lansing to give you an update. Is, is that right, Jan?
I think yes, I think yes.
Yes, Brian, I, I ask you just give the board a brief update.
Absolutely. So as you know, with, there's two entities in Lansing that govern schools. One is the Fire Marshal and the other is the Bureau of Construction Codes, who we refer to as the BCC. So any project that we do, design-wise, has to go to both of those entities for review. The project that's up there now in review is for the, the temporary door barricade system that the school wants to install. The, so we sent it back in June of 2020. The state put in some rules and regulations for those devices because there's several companies that supply and install those devices. So they, the Fire Marshal and the BCC issued some regulations and the procedure of what they want, how they want it followed before they're installed in the school. So we've, we've done the first step. We sent our drawings up along with what manufacturer is going to be used and located the doors of where they would be. The Fire Marshal has come back and submitted that they approved the project. So we're just waiting on the BCC to reply with their comments for plan review. When they come back, I'm, I'm not anticipating any problems. When they come back and it's approved, then the company needs to pull a permit through the BCC in Lansing. And they will install the devices. And then both the Fire Marshal and the BCC inspectors will come out upon completion of the job. And they will look at each of the door installations before they approve the installation 100%. So the first step is done for, for us. The Fire Marshal's approved it so they can install. We're just waiting on the BCC now.
Sounds great. Thanks, Brian. I'm good.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too. Okay, next now superintendent report.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I don't have COVID. I'm doing this as purely a precaution. Last week, you know, I was sick and in this time of the year, I tend to get bronchitis. And so I, so I'm not breathing and coughing and everyone, I keep my mask on. Last month, I reported that I had been visiting the buildings, visiting classrooms, observing teachers, the interaction between the students and teachers. And I reported then that it was very positive. And I've continued to do that, and I report again tonight that it's just been amazing. It's just outstanding. You can see the work between the teachers and our students. You really have some, some great students. And I've said it before, as an outsider, you really do have some really good students. Maybe even commented, commented on my attire, my ties, and all be very positive. So great students. I also want to say, you also have some great administrators. I've worked with a lot of administrators over the last 30-plus years. And I would rank your administrators at the top. They are cooperative, they are very helpful, and they all go above and beyond. I've had nothing but support and help from all of them. And you see many of them here tonight, a couple of them from, you know, are here building principles. And we'll be giving a presentation later in Carley, and I think probably you know, are here building principles and will be giving a presentation later in in Carly, and I think probably Diane is probably listening in through Zoom somewhere. Uh, the same with Maria. And then also with with Jan, I I just have to give a a plug to Jan because she's primarily responsible for all of these uh bond projects, in addition to her other tasks and responsibilities. So a shout out to Jan, but the administration is is also uh doing a great job. I I enjoy working with them. Um, but I have discovered that there is, I think, one way that we can improve our administration and our team. And uh she's here tonight. Uh, that's Kathy Belkowsky. Uh, we are excited to uh uh welcome her to our team because I think she's going to make it complete. Uh, you may recall the last month, I talked about uh meeting with the uh administrators and learning that there were some issues um in the human resource area that might be helpful to them. Because of the manpower shortage that we face, it's hard recruiting. We're competing with a lot of other school districts in Oakwood County and surrounding areas. And then to retain those individuals. And uh Kathy's going to help us in that way. And so uh she's here this evening. But before I let her say a few things, I have to ask her to do. Um, I I do want to say a couple of things. You do have a resume. Uh, so you have uh information about her work experience, but I want to say something about her education. Uh, she does have a a bachelor's degree, not a bachelor's of science degree from Central, but there's a couple of other points here that um I I need to to note because I think it shows a little bit about her and her character, that she is looking for ways to be better and to improve. And if you look on her education, she's got uh, she's certified in number areas, certified as a human resources specialist in two thousand six by Michigan State University, certified as a senior professional with the Society for Human Resources Management in in two thousand fifteen, and then also certified as a senior professional in human resources uh by the Human Resources Certification Institute in two thousand ten. So it really shows that she is looking for ways to be a better administrator and to be a a better human uh resource manager specialist, if you will. Other things that really impressed us in the interview process, she has a really warm and friendly. Uh, it's an engaging personality. In fact, at the end of our interview, we found ourselves just having a casual conversation. When that happens, you know that you've connected, and and she did a marvelous job that way. You'll also note that she has a very honest and genuine demeanor. And that really is important. You need to have trust. You need trust in any strong relationship, and you certainly need trust in a strong organization, and and she will bring that to the team. Uh, she's very passionate. Uh, she's a professional. She's got a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm, and and we're excited about uh what she hopes, what she, what we hope she'll bring to the uh to the districts. The final piece that really uh sealed it for all of us, when we asked about what she could do to help us retain uh employees and what we could do to recruit new employees for some of the positions that are, we know will be available in the coming months, she provided some very practical ways in which to do that. She provided clear-cut examples. She was very creative, and most importantly, she was, she demonstrated out-of-the-box thinking. And I think that's very important i- in this, in this day and age, at this time, because it's hard to find good employees when everybody else is competing. So what gives us that edge? Uh, and so she really knocked it out of the park. So anyway, um, I asked Kathy here this evening, asked her to say a couple of things, maybe talk about the where we're we're heading the next couple of months. Kathy, welcome, and floor is yours.
Hi, Kathy. Come on up to the podium.
Quite sure how I can follow that up. So thanks, Gary, for all the information. And Kathy, I just started um last Monday, so I had a great first week. I think dove right into a lot of different things here. Everybody's been great, very welcoming. Um, just sharing a lot of information and seeing that I'm asking about or just want to learn more. So right now, trying to learn the district. As Gary mentioned, a lot on the recruiting side. So I think in the first week, we've already um done a few things there between handshake and job fairs. Posting on different sites, some ideas out on the marquee. Really trying to look at some different ways that we can get others engaged. We have a, I have a call with Northern Michigan University tomorrow to talk about, um, they talked about uh highlighting Brandon in a jobs digest that they're looking to put out, as well as do a few social media campaigns to highlight um our district. So sometimes with some of the smaller universities, we have a better chance of getting in and getting a more intimate relationship. Um, that's what I found on the private industry side as well. So that's where the majority of my experience comes from, is automation and robotics. Um, but working for some smaller companies where we had to have different ends on how we can get candidates excited about our organization. So tomorrow with Northern, it'll be great just to see what ideas they have. Um, I think I've connected to over forty schools on handshake, posted some of our positions out there. So um initially, our trust score on handshake was a sixty. It's now up to eighty in just a week's time by just different communication and comments and feedback and things that we can do there. So little steps, but hoping, you know, it takes time to build relationships with some of these organizations, but I think we're gonna get there. Um, I know the team here is working on what positions we're gonna need in the fall. We have urgent openings right now, special, especially on the special education side, paraprofessionals. It's it's difficult for every industry. I think on the private side, we've seen that for many, many years. Talent is tough, and now on the, you know, education side, feeling that pinch as well. So just trying to look at some other ways that we can get um students excited. We've also signed up for the Saginaw, or yeah, Saginaw Valley State University job fair here in a couple of weeks. Have done some research on top education programs in universities in Michigan and then across the nation, and those are the schools that we've connected with and also on the special education side. So just a few steps that we've kind of taken this last week, but very excited to be here. And like I said, everybody's been great. It it really has it it's probably been my fir- best first week anywhere. So I I really appreciate everybody.
Thanks, Kathy. Welcome aboard. We're excited. Thank you very much. Welcome. Gary, is that correct? Is anything else?
No, that that's it. Thank you.
And if I can also say, thanks, Jan, and Carly, and Diane Zidane, where she is. What our our core cabinet team, we're just so proud of you guys too. Gals is awesome, but appreciate it. Okay, next I have board reports, and I do actually have a s- a small one. Uh, we had one of our teachers come a couple of months ago, or maybe even longer that, recommend a trip for her Spanish class. And the teacher Lori Moreno sent us board members an email, but I just wanted to read some highlights. She said, "Last week, I traveled to Chicago with a few other teachers and a group of students. It turned out to be one of the highlights of my twenty-three teaching career. Throughout this entire experience, the students were engaged, attentive, asked questions, showed genuine interest, and truly seemed to be enjoying themselves. At the end of the tour, we received some wonderful compliments. The bus driver told us that of all the tours he's ever driven for, this was the best group of students he's ever driven. He said the icing on the cake came from the tour director. He told me, over the years, he's worked with hundreds of groups and thousands of kids. He says he gets good groups, really good groups, and bad groups. He said, "But it's very rare, but sometimes they get what in their industry they call a super group." He said, "That's what our kids are, a super group." He was thoroughly impressed by them in every way." So she's, that continues to say, "My heart was so full and bursting with pride after this experience." I don't think any of us, neither the students nor chaperones, will ever forget these two days. It was life-changing for all of us. And it was a trip to a Spanish trip to Chicago that a couple of other students joined in on. But it was just, it was, this was heartwarming for us to read, I know, as as board members. But thank you, Lori. Appreciate it. And yes, you're gonna get approval for the next one. Anybody else got a board report? Okay, uh, next on our agenda, we have public comments and questions on agenda business. And before we start, I'm just gonna read the uh parameters. Okay, we have two areas for public comments and questions. The first is on agenda business. And the other is the citizens input section. For those who would like to speak, please sign in on the sheet that's on the table where you walked in. Fill in your name, email address, or phone number, home address, group affiliation, if any, and the topic you're going to speak on. For those virtual attendees, raise your hand in the chat area so you can be called on. Type your name, contact, email, or phone number, and indicate the topic you want to speak on. To our community, parents, and those that are listening in, the Brandon Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments and the importance of expressing yourselves to us on district matters. Here are the guidelines for speaking. You must sign in. Please recognize yourself by stating your name. Each statement will be limited to three minutes, and you can only speak once. The statements shall be directed at the board only. Generally, the board will not respond to public comments during the meeting. To ensure due process and respect of individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. A problem involving an individual or specific incident is best handled through administrative channels. Such matters should be reduced to writing and sent to Dr. Richards or the board president. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for the dignity and the privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it's not the intent to stifle public public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you're unsure of your legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. The board wants to hear what people want to say. We expect each speaker to model for our students and others in the audience on how we can respectfully disagree with others' views or voice and opinion or ask questions. Please give accolades and encouragements to our teachers, staff, and students that are making learning progress and successes every day, every student. And do we have anybody signed up, Maria?
I do not have anyone virtually.
Okay.
We do have one here, probably maybe in this time.
Okay, and Mr. Warren, we're gonna, we're gonna take you for the second citizens input.
Speaking now?
No, at the second part, the second one. Yeah, citizens, because it's not on agenda business. Okay, I'll hold this here and save this for later. Okay, next on our agenda, we have approval of the consent agreement. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Larissa Kaskin, yes. Josh Zilkin?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Okay, next we have information and discussion items. Finance report, Jan.
Hi, um, I have two items tonight. The first item, um, we'll discuss the Bellam proceeds. Um, action item H is asking the board to give approval to um spend these proceeds. Per statute, um, and I confirm this with our our bond attorney, Christopher Moreno, we have a couple of years to once you sell a building, if um there was money from a prior bond put into that building, you have two years to spend those proceeds. Um, actually, the sale proceeds are considered replacement proceeds. That's the term. So we um received the check from Mr. Charles Snyder in February of last year. So we're, you know, we've got a few more months to spend the money. And we have to spend the money on um construction projects or anything that the two thousand and six bond was used for. So in other words, we can um pay for equipment, we could pay for, for the, our parking lot, uh playground. All of those things would qualify for us. Uh, buses do not qualify. Because that was not part of them the last one. Um, so we have about four hundred and forty thousand two seventy-five is our current balance in in the separate capital projects account. When we sold the building, I set up a a new account for those money so they would be tracked. Uh, our financial audit, they're in a separate column. So everything about those um those funds is separate. There's no mailing with the general fund. So that's a Bellam proceeds, yeah.
Okay, any questions for Jan on that? No, I'm glad, no, yes, obviously, I'm glad we have that money.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Maybe offset some of the other things.
Right, it really just adds to our bond money, our ability to bond.
And.
To look at. And then I'm going to talk about our bus replacement schedule.
Okay.
Been talking about for a couple of months, and we ran out of time.
Yes.
This is just four slides.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to give you kind of a where we're at with our buses. We currently have twenty-seven. So our fleet consists of twenty-seven buses. Right now, our bus runs, we we run uh twenty-one, twenty-one daily, fifteen general ed, six special ed. So that means we have um backup buses, or spares, as we call them, a six. Brandon, we own twenty buses. Our first student owns seven. We lease monthly, we saw first student buses. So we're spending an annual lease cost on the first student buses about ninety-one thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars, based on the the current contract. The age of our buses, we have one bus and passed police inspection, two thousand and six bus, so we kept it. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, we purchased fifteen buses, two thousand and fifteen, two, and two thousand and seventeen, two buses. So what, what does look, can everybody see that? It's a little small. Um, regarding the bond, the current um budget for buses in the bond is two point three million dollars. That consists of um one point two million in series one and one point one million in series two. We do have discretion to move those monies around. We can, we can take some series two money and put it into series one. So that's something I want, I'm going to suggest we do. Um, the suggestion tonight is that um we've purchased seven buses. Now, if the board approves that, um, we're looking at about maybe the end of the year before we would actually take possession of those buses. The turnaround time, because of everything we know that's going on, it's taking that long. The reason for the seven, right, this summer or next fall, they would replace the seven first student-owned buses. Therefore, that's a general fund savings. And also, um, there's some other reasons. There are better buses, our mechanic prefers um maintenance-wise. So we're recommending seven new buses to be purchased or ordered now to be received uh late fall. That's eight hundred and thirty-five thousand six twenty-five. Um, those have been specked out. Uh, Josh Corey, our mechanic, uh, we've been back and forth with um Tim Pickman, he's the district's bus representative. He's been working for the district even, you know, before I got here. Also, looking at maybe next year, purchasing three, which means we probably would want to order them in the fall, at the latest, to be delivered summer of twenty twenty-three. And I estimated the cost there to be sixty-four. And then the summer of twenty twenty-four, we would purchase five. That would spend the series one money. If you look down, that would spend one point eight million dollars. I'm sorry. That would, yes, that would be one point eight million dollars, which is a little more than series one. So the thought would be, again, that we would um take a project that we originally were thinking series one, maybe a roof or something, and delay that to series two. Twenty twenty-five, we're looking at purchasing four buses, and again, then we're, we are into series two for five hundred thousand. So the bottom line, I have two point three million dollars spent. Now, this can be rearranged differently, if the board would like. But as you can see, for the two point three million dollars that we put in this um bond, bond application, that buys us nineteen buses. So we have twenty-seven now, and this buys us nineteen. We would either, so an option, we take um a little bit more of the bond money. We know that we have the Bellan money, the four hundred and forty thousand. We can't directly pay for that, but you know, you can substitute pay for something else and buy buses, more buses now or later. Or we will be looking at, just so the board will understand, we will be looking at the general fund purchasing from buses at some point. And we've done that prior, but that would be um where, how we would replenish our fleet. And we've done that prior, but that would be where, how we would replenish our fleet. We will have some old buses, we're gonna, as we purchase these new ones, we will keep our old buses, that's, they will turn into spares. But with buses at two thousand fourteen, they're gonna be ten years old in two thousand twenty four and twenty five, for the ones we purchased in fifteen. I wanted to give you this overview, I know it's probably a lot to consider, but this is the big picture, this accounts for our bond money. This accounts for the age of our fleet and just kind of the long range planning for our bus, for our bus fleet. And it saves the general fund, which is a primary first to save money to the general fund. Any questions on buses?
Yeah, one question. So if we keep it, we're keeping all of them, help me out here, because I'm asking, we're keeping all these, these buses. That doubles our fleet that we have, like we have spares and things like that, are we deadlining some of them? Would we plan on selling, selling some buses, like is that, is that thought, I'm sure it has come up, I just was wondering that we will have all this. All these buses, you know, once we're done purchasing that we're here, I just want to make sure if we're not utilizing them, that we're kind of alternatives, probably to help out our budget.
We will sell them, we sell the ones with the most mileage or the ones that are rusted, that type of thing. We've been selling buses all along for the last several years. Once they don't pass police inspection, we definitely get rid of them. Unfortunately, we don't get much for them.
What does that mean, we don't get much for them?
Oh, like maybe three thousand dollars, so it's really low. I should add that the nineteen buses that we currently had, we own them. We did not lease them, we, we did a lease buy, so we actually own the, well, four of the buses were making payments. But we own them, which is a good thing, so.
So what's the longevity of those?
Well, they say ten years, but it's ten years is what, you know, the, the experts will say. You also have to look at mileage and then the condition, our roads, our backroads are hard on buses, we know that.
So our experience might be different than what the experts.
It might be. In our first student contract, there's some parameters on the age of the buses, because they're doing the work to keep them up, so. Contract addresses that we have to make sure that our buses are, you know, this particular age and order and that type of thing. They're not gonna come in and have two service buses that are falling apart, nor do we want that.
Right.
But, and again, this is just, this can be moved around, I wanted to give you a general idea. And to understand that we're looking at moving some series two money into series one. Otherwise, we just don't, we only, we can't buy that many buses until series two, which would start in two thousand twenty five.
And tonight's action item only pertains to the seven?
Yes, and when we agreed to lease from first students, it was really, it wasn't meant to be like a long term thing, because it was expensive. The thought was, we're gonna do this, it was about the same as buying ourselves, but we weren't stuck with a seven year bus payment. And then the idea was if the bond were to pass, which we knew we were working on a bond, that we would do something like this.
I'm really glad that you offered that piece of insight on the strategy, because that was the missing piece for me, so I appreciate it.
Yes, yes, it really was the strategy. You couldn't count on the bond passing, but we knew we would do this and help out the general fund.
And Jan, just one quick, I sort of, what Melissa sort of said, but I just want to make sure, not that it's a big understanding, it's more for the future, not this year. We have twenty seven buses, is that typically what we run, so are you, you're not gonna get the four gate buses here?
No, no. So once you replace these seven.
Number was.
Yeah, I know we have, and I have a list of the mileage, we've got four or five buses that are already well with one twenty five and a hundred fifty thousand miles.
Yeah.
And Joshua, who does all that, so.
So as new buses come in, we'll most likely be getting.
So after we buy these seven, we'll have twenty seven still, we're gonna be right, right where we're at now, because.
That's the number we're gonna cover at.
I can show the twenty one that, I mean, actually, Josh would probably prefer to have more spares. While sometimes with athletic trips and after school and all of that, we're a little tough on the, on trying to have enough buses, so if we get thirty. I think that, that would not go to waste at all.
Okay, so then, once we purchase these, the seven buses that the, the first student, do they stay here?
No, they're going back, they're going back, and they already know we're planning to do this, or the board approves, this is a consideration. And they're actually happy, because they need buses, other districts are looking for buses, because you can't, it takes a long time to get buses.
So why are we doing seven now and then going again in the fall?
Seven right now. Well, two things, the seven was to replace the seven, and then Gary and myself and Josh and Cory, our mechanic, met. And we think that's, that's good right now, we don't, we can get by for another year, and Cory said he preferred not to have so many at one time. There's a lot of, what was it, Gary, a lot of startup, potentially maintenance of bunks or whatever, whatever word you want to say, that he may have to do some tweaking. So not having ten was hard for him to have seven. And we're trying to stagger buses, like what we did before with about fifteen, which we've had two, but if you stagger them, the district can get on some type of a.
Schedule.
Schedule, replacement schedule, so that's a little. That's what this is about, okay?
Thank you for that, thank you, Jan, great, do you have anything else, Jan?
No.
Any other more money you want? Okay, next, we're going to move to our, no, we're moving to our education report, currently still with MiFi.
All right, this evening I'm going to drive from this seat, if that's okay.
Yeah.
But I do have some partners in crime with me, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Stevens. Who will be, all three of us will be presenting this evening regarding our MiFi information and data results for this school year. So this is what I, what I believe, that I'm not a historian in Brandon yet, as you guys know. But I do believe this is the first year we have given this survey here in the school district. The MiFi survey is the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth Survey. It is an online survey that is supported by the Michigan Department of Education as well as Health and Human Services. It was actually created in about two thousand and five, out of the state of Michigan. And the first real year that it was put into place was two thousand seven, two thousand eight school year. And during that time, it's been given across the state of Michigan, at its peak, about seven hundred and sixty, so. Schools participate in completing the survey. So what is this survey? It's a survey that's given to grade seven, nine and eleven. Districts can choose what grade levels you give the survey to. You can own, your choices are seven, nine and eleven, so you kind of pick off, you can pick seven and eleven, you can do nine and eleven, you can do any combination of which. However, this year, we did it with all of our students. The survey looks at behaviors and attitudes in relation to possible at risk actions for students. So they can be related to nutrition, they're related to physical activities, so. Do you eat breakfast in the morning? What percent of our students have breakfast before they come to school? How many of you exercise more than sixty minutes a day? Those are some of the questions that students would see in taking the survey. Asking about injuries, tobacco use, alcohol perceptions, other drug use, marijuana is actually mentioned in the survey. And then also sexual behaviors. What's cool about the survey is that it asks students perceptions about these things and attitudes towards them. So it helps districts understand kind of the culture of the student body around these particular items. This is an assessment practiced every two years, and that's strategic, so you can follow cohorts. So seventh graders take it, and then they take it again as ninth graders, and then they take it again as eleventh graders. So this year we have a baseline with our seventh, ninth and eleventh graders. It is a completely anonymous survey, and students can volunteer, they volunteer to participate. All of our families receive a letter from our buildings informing them of this opportunity for students to participate. If they did not want to participate, they let our buildings know, and then they were excused from, from taking part in the survey. It took about forty five minutes, it took about one class period for our students to take, and it was all online. As I briefly mentioned earlier, the results can be used to help schools make data driven decisions to help improve prevention and health promotion programming. We did participate this year primarily because, as you know, we received many state grants or many grants as a result of COVID. But the thirty one N grants, in which we were able to secure additional social work and counselors in our district, requires our participation in this grant. Our participation in the survey to receive funds for that grant. We did conduct this in early February, and after we conducted the survey, we got the results back very, very quickly. And as, as an administrative team, our cabinet team, we all met as a group together and analyzed the data. And looked for strengths and areas of opportunity in the data, so. With that being said, I'm gonna pass the baton over to Mr. Tucker and Mr. Stevens, who are gonna share some specific information to their buildings. And then I'll be back to wrap it up.
So the first slide, you're going to see some takeaway, some positive takeaways from BMS, right? There's a lot of information that Carly talked about, so first we're talking about some positive takeaways. The second slide is going to be some bullying and some mental health that we want to work on from the survey. And then the third slide that I'll show is how we are going to address these issues that we have. So the first is talk about some positives. Eighty percent of students feel they can go to a parent for help with their personal problem. That's great. Our middle school kids, our seventh graders, feel like they can go to their moms and dads for help, that's great. Second bullet, eighty seven point six percent of students feel that their friends have not used tobacco recently, that's the culture, the culture piece that Carly talked about. Tobacco use, it was reseen as going down a little bit. Third one, eighty seven percent of students have a friend that participated in after school activities. Now, that doesn't say after school BMS activities, that can be activities through church, could be activities through their parents or whatever. But eighty seven percent of our kids are doing something after school, they're not just going home and sitting alone. Fourth bullet, ninety three point three percent of students who enjoy spending time with mom. That question's in there, do you enjoy spending time with your mom? Look at that, ninety three percent, all right, dads, we didn't leave us out either. Eighty eight percent point three enjoy spending time with dad, that's awesome. Now, for my son, that's probably gonna be like three percent, because he's seventeen. But that can be more about heart, that's a great number. The next one, ninety, ninety six point two percent of our students have a friend that tries really, really hard at school, I left the word hard out of there. They try really hard, that's the culture piece. Our students are hanging out with those students that try really hard. Next one after that, ninety three point six of our students have lots of chances to get involved in sports clubs, et cetera, outside of school. We were just at track practice today, I know I'm gonna have five or six kids that leave to go to soccer practice elsewhere after the track practice, and that's okay. They're busy, they're involved, we know idle hands, idle time are not good for teenagers, the busier they are, the better they are. And then the last one, ninety seven point three percent of our students reported that their parents feel cigarette or marijuana use to be wrong or very wrong. Our kids are getting the message at home, tobacco and marijuana are wrong to use, they're getting that message from parents. So these are some of the good things that we pulled away from the middle school. All right, so things to be mindful of, social, emotional learning, bullying, mental health. All right, these are issues we've had for a long time that we will continue to have and we will continue to work on. First one, thirty three point six percent of students have been bullied on school property in the last year, now that could be physical, verbal, electronic. But a third of our kids have been bullied in some way, shape or form. Second one, twenty five percent have been electronically bullied. It's very easy to be brave behind a phone, behind your Snapchat, behind your social media, it's pretty brave. Third one, very common for middle school, almost eighty percent students have heard rumors or lies being spread about middle school. That's the drama that we talk about, that's kids worrying about others instead of themselves, that's, that's very common, but that number, I didn't realize was that high. So that's some of our bullying. Mental health, some of these were shocking, and we are gonna work on it. Twenty seven point one percent of students who did something to purposely hurt themselves, yet they didn't want to die. So that could be cutting, bruising, burning, whatever that is, and that's for control. When they feel their life's out of control, they control how they harm themselves and when they harm themselves, or however they decide, that's that control piece. Second bullet, seventeen point two percent of students have actually created a plan to attempt suicide in the past year. When we do our risk assessments, ninety five percent of the students never have a plan. When they have a plan, it's when it jumps it up to that next level. They've been thinking about it more and more, that was one that was very high in me, and then the last one is very alarming. Twelve point five percent of students who have ever tried to kill themselves, now again, that's just our seventh grade group, but still, that's a very alarming number to us. Okay, so here's some things we're gonna do that we currently do and will do more of in the future. BMS next steps. Carly talked before about we have new positions in the building because of the grant, because of the MiFi, middle school has a second counselor now. We used to only have one, now we have two fully certified counselors. The next one, work with our two counselors, social worker, behavior coordinator and staff members to address these issues. We have to then go back to our staffs and address some of these things that we're seeing. Next one, family outreach, BGYA, we just did a show on Friday, Mr. Stevens, that I destroy illusions was very good. By BGYA, they brought that to us. Programs through Community Ed and Brandon Coalition, Brandon Coalition's brand new, Mr. Stevens, myself and Mr. Dynas met with Courtney from the Brandon Coalition. She's asking us, what do we need specifically? So I told her, we need help transitioning our fifth graders to sixth graders in, we need parent and student support to get those kids ready. So she's taken a lot of notes and she's ready to help us in any way we can. The next one, MTSS protocols, we've refined our whole MTSS protocols, mobile tier systems of support. We have monthly meetings, teacher input, parent input and more student check ins, and we have more professionals, another counselor, social worker to do these check ins. And it's not just for schoolwork support, that's emotional support, that's anything those kids need, you check in on. And I like dogs, and our therapy dog Jasper comes every now and then, and Jasper was just there last Friday, so I always like the therapy dog Jasper. So those are, you know, what's good, what's bad, and now we're gonna move forward.
Mr. Tucker, do you mind sharing the character lessons as well?
Oh, I missed it, sorry, so our character lessons, positivity project, we had in the elementarys, right? It doesn't really fit for secondary math, but what we've done is we've taken those terms and those characteristics. And now we're just doing them ourselves in the classroom. Perseverance, resiliency, tolerance, resiliency and tolerance, those are huge. We do those every Tuesday now in our seminars, we started back up end of January. So those are going back in our Tuesday lessons, those characters again, those character ed coops, so thank you. Questions about the numbers or the next steps or, or anything?
No, it hits us in the face though, it's scary.
Well, that's why we start with the good though, too, there's, oh, there's so many data points, there's so much good, and there's a lot we need to work on as well. So we never throw the good out with the bad, there's lots of good things in there too, absolutely.
Well done on this.
I have a quick question, you mentioned the transition from elementary to middle school. So are there like parents, and I don't have kids in middle school yet, but are there parents and students? Almost like a, like orientation type thing that happens?
So we used to have all the kids come over for the transition day, it was halfway off of school. And for the middle school, you know, we haven't done that two years since COVID, so what we're trying to do now is bring groups and organizations in that can tell here. This is what, with me, it's what you need to be successful at the middle school. So I'm thinking about stuff off the top of my head, right, talk about color coding the folders. It's a simple thing to do, well, I'll purchase all the color coding folders, and then at registration, parents and kids can come in and organize and buy what they need from us right then and there. You don't have to go to anywhere else to get your school supplies, we're gonna buy it for you, even organize right here, just to some, everybody has a red mat folder, everybody. Everybody, everybody has a green folder for science, why? Because your sixth grade science book's green. Little things like that, smaller planners, we're thinking about that, you know, things to get them ready for sixth grade. This year we were so happy, everybody was back, we got the sixth graders in, and all the other two hundred kids, and we were like, whoa, whoa, whoa. So we have to go back a little bit, square one, get them ready to come back and, and help parents with that.
So will we be having that data this year, or a half day, or a time when they'll go?
So we are doing our register, that has to be negotiated with the other, because there's no half day this year for that, that could be possibly in the future. But we're doing a registration a week earlier this year, so the last week in August, the whole building's open. For parents and students to come in after the registration day, before registration was Monday, then the teachers came and we were done, we moved it up a week. So we can have an open week at the end of August, they have parents and kids coming.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great job, anybody else questions for the seventh grade?
No, but I appreciate all the work that you do as the principal of the middle school, because. You even have high scores now that still talk about their experience of you walking halls and being present, so thank you for you, you know, identifying this and. Incorporating this in the building, this is much appreciated.
No, no worries, thank you.
So you're hearing a lot of the same stuff that Mike had to say at the high school as well. When we looked at these questions, there were some things that really stuck out to us, and some things that we kind of knew. But the one thing I think, and I think Mike and the rest of the administrators will agree with, the biggest thing that stuck out to me is something I kind of already knew. Is the family, the, the families that come together and branden our students in these questions. And there were, there were tons of questions, but the one thing that really came out is how supportive our kids feel about their families. And, and that, that's overwhelming to me, and I guarantee that these numbers are way higher than most of the districts around this area. So numbers are very similar to, to what Mike had to say in a lot of respects. Eighty nine percent of our students generally feel safe while at school. And that, that, that to me is a big number, we still have kids that don't feel safe here at. And that, that, that to me is a big number. We still have kids that don't feel safe here at, at the school. But that is a big number to me of our students that do feel safe. And we've had conversations with those kids that don't feel safe and are taking what they have to say and taking their needs into consideration. And, and we're having some major conversations about those things. Ninety one percent of our students claim to work hard while at school. We, I think we all know that most of our students can work a little bit harder. But in their minds, ninety one percent feel that when they come here, they're actually working really hard. And that's good to hear, that they, that they feel that way. About eighty one percent feel they are given opportunities to talk to teachers one on one. That was, if you guys remember a few years ago, that was a huge deal with the Brandon two thousand twenty five. What connections can our kids make to individual staff members at our school? And it's great to see that that objective that we had a few years ago, at least in the student's mind, is, is paying off. And I'm, I'm really excited and proud to, to look at that number. Eighty percent of our students report that they have not used a vape. But that does mean twenty percent of our students report that they have. That's a high number to me. But eighty percent have it. In this world of vaping, and it gets really blown up, especially in the media, it's true. A lot of our kids use vapes, but eighty percent are saying they don't. So we need to work on that other twenty percent for sure. Eighty six percent of our students enjoy spending time with mom and eighty three percent enjoy spending time with dad. That is big, especially at the high school level. I have two daughters at the high school level and I can't get them to spend a minute with me. Um, so, so that's, that's, that's awesome. That speaks to our community. It speaks to our families. And that's, that's amazing. Eighty three percent of our students feel comfortable going to their parents with personal problems at the high school level. That's, that's just a month. That's awesome. Once again, it goes to show what, uh, those types of relationships our kids are building with their families. And I, I just wrote a general statement. It's evident by this survey that students have strong relationships and feel well supported by their family. So those things that we need to be mindful of, and there are lots of things that we need to be mindful of. When we talked about this, that we wanted our focus to be these two things, knowing that we still have a lot of things to work on in other areas too. One, the bullying that may be taking place in and out of our schools. Seventeen percent of students have been bullied on school property in the last year. They report, they report that the ninth and eleventh grade students. That's a large number. We don't want, we want that number to be zero. And seventeen percent, that's, that's a large number. We need to work, we need to work on it as a school system and work with our community to make that number lower. Sixty, almost sixty eight percent of our students have witnessed others being called names or put down in some ways, form or fashion in our school. Once again, a big number that we need to all plant down on. And twenty eight percent of our students have seen bullying message towards classmates on social media. And I am gonna tell you, and I, and I think I've said this before, when I talked to our assistant principal Megan, who does, deals with most of the discipline, I'm making this number up, but I'm probably not far off. And I say about eighty five to ninety percent of our issues at school start on social media. It's not things that usually are happening at school. It's stuff that's happening on social media that was then brought in. So that is something that we really, really want to build. So is the social media aspects of, of school. Mental health, about, about half of our students have felt so sad or hopeless every day for at least two weeks in a row. This is probably the one that, the thing that was like, oh my gosh, it really stuck out to me maybe the most of the whole survey. That half of our students for two weeks in a row have felt this way. That doesn't necessarily mean at school, but it could mean in school, outside of school, a combination of. And that really hit me hard, that one. And almost thirteen percent of our students have actually created a plan to attempt suicide within the last school. Obviously, we want that number to be zero as well. And when you talk about thirteen percent of the kids in our building that have done, that have done that, I think that's ninety one students. If you really played, you played out the percentages, if you played it out full. Not, 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 not everybody took this to them. You really played out, that's ninety one kids at the high school. And that's a staggering number. So what are we doing? We're doing a lot of the same things the middle school's doing. And, and we're really focusing on our kids. So we are very lucky and I want to once again thank this board for the additional social work that you've given us this past year. It has paid huge dividends already at all four levels in our buildings. I've talked to every principal. And that's paid huge dividends. So thank you so much for that. And we're working with them every day on new and different things that we can do now that we never could do before, because we just didn't have the manpower to do these things. So I think we're already making huge debts into those staggering numbers. Like Mike said, we've had assemblies. The Tom Coverley Assembly was awesome. I wish everybody could have been there. We are continuing to look at other things like okay to say, challenge days, and those kinds of things to meet these needs. We're gonna reevaluate. A big thing that we're gonna do is we actually, we've already started doing. We're sitting down with our health curriculum and looking at our health curriculum, reevaluating our health curriculum, finding out where our gaps are in our health curriculum. And then filling those gaps with the things that we found out in the survey that we need to work on. And that's ongoing and something we're currently working on. Family outreach. We, we need to be partners with the community. If we're gonna make any debts, we can't do it alone. The community can't do it alone. The kids can't do it alone. We need to work together for anything to improve. So we really feel it's important to utilize programs like BGYA, programs through Community Ed, the Brandon Coalition that Mike, that Mike mentioned. All of these things are the things that we're using, but we can definitely use more. MTSS protocols. We're very lucky. I don't know if you guys knew this or not. MTS multi-tiered systems of support. We actually at the high school identified our most struggling kids, not just in academics, but socially and, and in other ways too. And we actually created a class second semester and put those kids in a class. Worked with their parents and their parents agreed that this would be a great class for our kids to get that extra, not only academic help, but social help, mental health. Our counselors will go in there and meet with our students, with the students. It's just been a fantastic class ran by Gwen Stein. And, and Jenny Geesling. They've done an amazing job. We've also started up AIM this year. AIM is our alternative program within our school. And we, we've worked with these kids and designed this whole program. So not only have they can succeed academically, but also can succeed socially in, in, in those ways too. Our counselors and our new social workers are working one on one. In many cases, we've met with, with those kids. And lastly, we're increasing peer to peer supports. We do have a peer to peer class, which links our, some students with other students that need those supports the most. We actually have that as a class and they also do things after school as well. So when you're giving that student to student interactions, which I think is really helpful. So I went pretty quick there, but that kind of sums up the high school. Is there any questions you have specifically about the high school?
I, I was gonna say, I'm so glad you brought in Tom Coverley to come in. That's, that's great. Challenge day, does it look like that's gonna be reinstated here?
So first, I do want to, I do want to, can I do a quick thank you to also Hillside Bible Church and the BGYA for bringing him in? There, there are those two. So I want to give them a shout out. Those groups. In addition to that, Challenge Day is something we're still kind of hopeful. We might even get a chance to do this year, but I don't know. The, the, the reason we have a new Challenge Day this year is twofold. One is they completely changed their program in the midst of COVID. So it's not the same and I, I don't think it's as good, but they, they say next year it's gonna go back to, back to normal. And two, Challenge Day is a three day commitment. Usually we hook on with another school district and we split those three days. This year, I guess probably because of COVID, people not doing it as much, we couldn't find a school within, within sixty miles to hook on to and share that expense, at least not yet. So that's why we haven't done it.
Okay. And I'm just gonna say for board members, they do look for people to volunteer and I did that one year. And it, it's, it's worth it. It's worth it. So, but very good.
I was saying, I'm just waiting for that to happen.
Anybody else questions, concerns? Great job, Dan.
I'm gonna turn over to Carly then to do a wrap up.
I'll just finish it up. Thank you both gentlemen for your time. This would be very much appreciated. As you can see, we take this very seriously. And this will definitely happen for years. Diane's again, her remarkable team have always been thoughtful to this work. And it's very, very important work and we look forward to continuing to deepen it in the future. Through our conversations, we recognize that we need to look at district-wide social emotional learning initiative. Not specifically targeting bullying or mental health, but we really want to look at the whole child approach and really study social emotional learning. We're gonna start that journey this Friday. We have professional development with our staff and there's a variety of opportunities in which our staff can start on their SEL journey. We are currently exploring a variety of resources that we could be using to help support our journey here in the district. That work will also begin on Friday with some opportunities for some of our mental health team to dig into some resources that Diane and secured for us to take a look at. We also will do this work in partnership with open schools. We've had some conversations with some folks over there who are able to provide us the best research-based tools and resources out there to ensure that we are doing the right thing for our students. Just so you know, our next year of participation will be the twenty two, excuse me, it sounds weird to say this already, the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four school year. We did it in February of two thousand and twenty two. So I think it would be strategic to do it in February two thousand twenty four. So you can look forward to it. And that's when we'll be able, this year was our baseline. And so that's when we'll be able to see what difference, differences we can be making. If you're curious about the data and would like some more information, please reach out to me personally. I'm happy to provide that to you. And we really appreciate your time again, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Great job, Carly. Any questions for Carly?
Thank you very much. Appreciate. Great update. Great update. Great presentation. Okay, next, we're gonna, on our agenda, we got action items. Can I get an approval for the Brandon High School freshman STEM classes overnight trip?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon High School freshman STEM classes overnight trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan from April eighteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty two. For Detroit, Michigan, April twenty fifth to twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, for the State of Michigan Bridge Competition as presented.
Any discussion? Okay, do we have a bridge discussion you want?
Well, you can come up and give a quick presentation. You can't bring in the. Come on up.
I thought you would have questions, so I came for you.
Well, they say walk me in. I was like, ooh.
Yes.
We've done the bridge competition for twelve years now. This would be the thirteenth year of the bridge competition. However, we have exceeded MDOT's program because last year, the last two years, they did not put it on because of COVID. And I put one on here at Brandon High School with fifty teams of my own. And invited MDOT engineers to join us. And so they are now saying that I have actually outlasted them. It is the highlight of the freshman STEM program. They do do some other labs, but it is the legend of the bridge competition. They learn the physics of a bridge. They do different type of testing. They write a proposal and it is a formal proposal. Most of them end up being somewhere between twenty five to forty pages long. And they are required to put specific things in there. It's the first time some of them learn how to do a summary before the paper. That confuses them. They have to have data in there. They also have to insert their CAD designs in there. And not every team makes it to states. I actually, two hours ago, found out our results. So this year we have twenty one teams that entered. Three person teams are required. Of the twenty one, we have nineteen teams that did qualify, which again says something about our students.
In our program.
Yes. Okay. So they write a forty page paper. They are stressed out around February getting this in. They have to wait at least a month to find out if they qualify. This year it was extended because we were going through a virtual, they were gonna do a virtual again this year. And they decided at the last moment, they are going to allow us to travel. That is why I need you to approve two different trips. Because as of right now, they do not know which one they are going to do. They are still negotiating contracts for travel. If it's in Detroit, we will hopefully be able to use our school busing. We're trying to work out getting enough bus drivers, unfortunately. Otherwise, we will be using Blue Lake's charter buses to go. It is completely paid for by MDOT track. So it does not cost the district anything. They supply us with the wood, the glue. The busing, they pay for the hotels. They get to stay at the Amway Grand. I wish, I, I, maybe I'll do it for you this year and I'll do a recap for you. The highlight is when the kids go in their rooms, because many of them have never stayed at a hotel. And if, even if they have, the Amway is really nice. So the screens coming from them the first five minutes. Once they find out that they get in though, they also have to do a presentation. So they learn how to present to adults, not their peers. There will be engineers standing in front of them the day of the competition. They have ten minutes to present. If they go over ten or under seven, they're docked points. They have a hundred point grading system that they're graded on for it. And they are not allowed to read the screen. We all know that how awful that is, is when somebody's reading the screen to you. And they are also not allowed to have cards. They actually have to know all of their lines for their presentation. So it is very impressive what they do. And so we often say that the hardest year in STEM is your freshman year. He learned sitzoo. Do you have any questions?
I do not. I know it's a great trip.
Our substitute today was actually a former bridge student. I mean, you still remember his bridge team. While I was looking at Dan, like, guess what? So former student today was my sub for Jamie Logan. So it was kind of nice. He came in. I was like, oh, you can just relax and you kind of look familiar. And he said, actually, I was in STEM and I did my bridge. So he actually was bonding with the kids, telling them about when he did the bridge competition and what he remembers. And he even remembers his teammates and what their team name was and everything. If you wanna see what a bridge is, because I get a lot of people go, well, what are these bridges? They also have to make a box for traveling. Otherwise, somebody steps on it and breaks it the night before and hometown room will be tears. So this would be the national bridge that won second place for the entire nation. Four years ago, that bridge right there held two hundred and twenty six pounds. And this is their prototype for this year. They don't know that I stole this from them. The seniors have, this is what the freshmen will be building also. Just a coincidence that it was a four-year kind of loop that they did. The senior team, it has to do suspension bridge. So this is their design as of right now. And we are hoping that this also will hold about two hundred pounds. Right now, it's in the hundred range though. Okay? So it is kind of impressive, the engineering that goes into these.
Yeah, very much. Thank you very much for bringing that. Wow. You got questions before we vote?
Yeah, but that's pretty impressive.
You're welcome to stop by anytime if you'd like to read a proposal or sit in the crowd while they practice. They'd love to give you feedback.
I'm so glad you presented that. Yeah, that you came up. That was great. Thank you. Learned a lot.
Yes. And I just love the perspective of the program too. My, my, both my son and daughter were in STEM too. And but now hearing how advanced this whole program has become. Great job. Thank you. Okay, can I get a roll call vote? I think I got a second. It's great.
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, approval of the human resource report. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented. Support.
Any discussion on that? Having none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Kettleman, I have some notice. Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Approval of the Oakland Schools My Peer Software Agreement for Finance and Human Resources. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Oakland Schools My Peer Software Agreement for Finance and Human Resources as presented. Support.
Any discussion on that? Having none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Kettleman, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Next, approval of bid for Harvey Swanson Playground.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Harvey Swanson Playground Improvements Bid Recommendation from Weekly Associates Incorporated toward bid to Sinclair Recreation, Holland, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and nineteen thousand. Note, this base bid scope includes an allowance of ten thousand as presented.
Support.
Any discussion on that? Though we've had a couple updates on that. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Approval of the twenty-twenty-two School Building and Site Bonds Series One Resolution. Ask, can I get a roll call vote, or can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty-two School Building and Site Bonds Series One Resolution as presented.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, having none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Kephaloon, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of the security camera upgrades?
Move the Brandon Board of Education award the bid of ROK Systems received in response to the school's districts. School districts request for bids for additional security cameras as presented. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of the phone emergency communication system upgrades?
Move the Brandon Board of Education award the bid of evolving technologies received in response to the school districts' request for bids for a phone emergency communication system upgrade as presented. Support.
Okay, any discussion? Having none, roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of capital projects fund?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the spending of bell and sale proceeds in the amount of four hundred and forty, four hundred, forty-four hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-five as presented.
Second?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Having none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Kephaloon, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval to purchase buses?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to purchase buses from Midwest Transit located in Marshall, Michigan as presented. Support.
Any discussion? Having none, roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. A motion for the approval of bid for Oakwood Parking Lot.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Oakwood Parking Lot Replacement Bid Recommendation from Wolf Gas Corporation toward the bid to Wal, Dorf, and Sons Incorporated in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars for site work, and Eastern Asphalt Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars for asphalt paving, grand total of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars as presented. Support.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Having none, can I get a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes, and could I get a motion for the approval of the DM Burp Contract Amendment?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the DM Burp Contract Addendum as presented.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, having none, roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Okay, and I know, I, is there anybody with their hands up? I know I have Mr. Warren for citizen input.
No hands up.
No hands up, Mr. Warren? Come on up, you got, for your.
Back again. All right, first, I want to say thank you to Mr. Tucker and Mr. Stevens, that was an excellent presentation they did. I'm here today for another incident. A child came home, well, got a phone call, said he wanted to kill himself during school. Were all adults there? That, that's like a very touchy subject to talk about when you hear a child say that they want to kill themselves. None of us up here are dumb, we know the consequences of situations, have a handle situations. And I feel they didn't do it the right way. He should have been removed immediately. Once he said, he would have just, he had said it twice. And I'm being told that we handled the situation the right way, just because we didn't, it wasn't in your timeframe, that doesn't mean it wasn't handled right. He was not removed immediately. They let him go and play because they said he didn't want to go, he's not an adult. He should have been removed. So they let him play and told him after you finish playing, we're going to go talk to somebody. That's wrong, he should have been removed. Because what if he hadn't went through what he said he was going to do? Then what? Y'all would have got sued. And I'm not here for this. Here to get my kids' education and get treated fairly. So, and then I bring it to the supposedly the right people, just be told. I mean, they emailed me a, a, a letter saying, well, we did the investigation, and we're going to send you a letter to tell you what we found. A phone call, that's what I should have got. The child was talking about killing himself. So when I finally talked to an administrator, and I'm a very honest person, yes, I didn't like what I was hearing, so I talked over the person. And I, I apologized, sorry for cutting you off, sir, but you did, that's how I was spoken to. Mr. Tucker knows me, Mr. Stevens knows me, most of y'all know me. Y'all know I'm a very, very good person, and I'm raising four kids of my own. One graduates this year from this school district, and he's going to Fair State because of his father. I want my kids to be treated the right way. And he was talking about, we all have to come together and be a team for these kids. I'm doing my part. We have to come together to go about this the right way. Any child that says they're going to kill themselves should be removed. I literally had to tell them, look, I'm going to take my son home because he should not be in school still after talking like that. But they can't sit here and say it's handled the right way because he was not removed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren.
And nobody's calling me, I, I, I'd have been to nine board meetings. I've gotten one phone call out of the nine board meetings. I, I need feedback, like, I don't want nothing to happen to my kids.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Well, we'll see if I get a phone call.
And, I'm not sure we have anybody else that signed up. Did anybody here sign up? Oh, I'm sorry.
I circled their name off, so I.
Oh, you want to come up? You, you, you can.
We got time.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, my name's Annalise Elliott. I'm a Brandon High School senior, I've been in this district since kindergarten. And I even went to like, all the like preschool stuff you guys offer. So I've been here my whole life. I really like this district, I think you guys are great, and I really just came up here to say thank you. I spoke previously, and I asked as a student on behalf of the student body for help because, especially after Oxford, I think it was very clear, we all need extra resources that aren't being provided outside of school, and this is where we need them. And so in the last couple board meetings, every single time on the agenda, there's stuff about, talking about steps everybody's taking to help make, give resources to the students and provide them at school. So I really appreciate that, because, you know, to start by talking about it. Another thing I would like to bring up is, I think a cultural change is truly the only way to end anything, which obviously has no simple solution, it's not like you can just be like, oh, change the culture of everything, but I think it really starts with how we speak and how we act, but also how like different actions are dealt with. I think when they're dealt with in very, very standard, it stops becoming like, oh, a silly little hotline card, and it's, no, this is a real resource. And I think we're slowly approaching that, I think slowly but surely, as we start to talk about it more and our language changes from something we don't talk about to something that's open because everybody wants to be here for you, I think it slowly improves. And so I really do appreciate it, and I know it's not going to be an overnight fix, but I do appreciate the first steps. And it does, it means a lot to me and a lot of other people I've spoken to.
Well, thank you very much, because that means lots to us, right, thank you. And keep, keep the progress, and I, I agree, we, we have to make changes, and I think they are obviously being done, and we're working through it, we're going to get, we're going to, we're going to make that change.
Thank you guys, I know I still could do this, but, you know, I see that you guys are fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, could I get a motion to go into closed session for security planning?
The Brandon Board of Education approve to enter a closed session for the purpose of security planning for the safety of students and staff as presented.
Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Okay, we'll take a three-minute recess and go into closed session, thank you.